Moving on to general items. Diana is already in the queue coming up here. Water and wastewater rate study presented by Diana Langley, our Public Works Director. Diana.
Good evening. So tonight I wanted to, this is the follow-up to the March 1st council meeting where we brought before council the different rate options for water and wastewater. At that time, council directed us to proceed forward with the five-year plan option one for both water and wastewater, but they also asked us to look at the baseline allocation that was proposed. But before I get into that, in previous council meetings, we've had questions about how many full-time employees are in the utilities division? And so I wanted to respond to that question tonight. Within the water division, there's 24.69 full-time equivalents. Within wastewater, there's 35.69 full-time equivalents. And the breakdown by the different locations is there on the screen. We've also talked about how water and wastewater are their own separate enterprise funds, separate from the general fund. And typically with the general fund, a large portion of the costs go to salaries and benefits. Whereas with utilities, it's a little bit different. Salaries and benefits makes up a minor portion or smaller portion of the budget than the supplies and services. With the contributions to other funds, that pays for, goes towards debt service and then also the supporting departments that are somewhat overhead to utilities. So that would be finance, you know, HR, the administration, engineering, et cetera. So, you know, why did we start this process with the new rate study? When you look at where our current revenues are compared to what we anticipated with the 2011 rate study, you can see that with the drought, the revenues under the existing rates are quite a bit less than what we would have anticipated. And so as we move forward, the current revenues are covering operations, but we're getting to a point that it's not covering debt service. Similarly, on wastewater, even though you wouldn't necessarily equate the drought to impacting wastewater, it does on our commercial accounts because they pay based upon their actual water usage. And so the revenues have decreased compared to what we would have anticipated. And again, we're getting into a situation where the revenues are covering operations and debt service, but over time, that will start to falter as well. So in talking about debt service, our bond covenants require that we maintain a minimum of a 1.20 debt coverage ratio. With water, we're estimating that in fiscal year 1617, we'll fall below that 1.20 debt coverage ratio. And in wastewater, we're starting to approach that 1.2 threshold. The other question that's come up, in previous presentations, I've talked about the need to have the 20% reduction by 2020. And so somebody asked me, you know, what did that, that mean? And so in our urban water management plan, we have a 2015 interim target and then the target that we need, need to meet in 2020. And those targets are based upon baselines that were established and there's five years, so 2005 through 2010, then also 2000 through 2010. So they looked at actual consumption for Yuba City during those timeframes. Took 80% of that to come up with that 2020 target. So it's 194 gallons per capita per day. When you look at the actual water consumption towards the bottom half of the table, you can see that 2012 through 2014, we didn't meet the 2020 target. In 2014, we met the 2015 interim target, but due to the conservation efforts that have taken place through 2015, you can see we actually dipped below that 2020 target. But that required a lot of work upon of our customers. I mean, that was, you know, not irrigating more than two days per week and then significant cuts elsewhere. And so what that tells us is we move forward to meet that 20% reduction, it's going to require some work as we move forward, especially if we, we come out of the drought. So as I mentioned with the rate options, in the two workshops, there's a workshop held in January, another workshop held in February, and then we brought this to council again on March 1st. We presented three different rate options. One was a two-year rate plan that was going to strictly cover O&M expenses and debt service. A five-year rate plan option one that covered O&M debt service and priority one and two projects, which the priority one and two projects were discussed in the rate shop and then also at the March 1st council meeting. And then the five-year rate plan option two, which included O&M expenses, debt service, and additional projects. What council directed staff to move forward with on March 1st is the five-year rate plan option one. The other thing that we discussed was staff's recommendation to reduce the baseline units by 33% to reflect the state conservation mandate. So for one-inch water service, for instance, the existing baseline allocation is 15 HCS, which is equivalent to one HCF is 748 gallons. We were proposing to reduce that basically by a third. Council asked us to go back and look at increasing that, increasing the reduction. So basically, instead of 10 units, look at 11 units. And so we have those numbers to present tonight. So with the five-year rate plan option one for water, these are the proposed rates and we, we've talked about this quite a bit before, so I'm not going to spend too much time on the rates unless council would like me to. And then what we did was based upon council's direction at the March 1st meeting, we said, okay, if we increase the base allocation for, and I'll use the one-inch water service as the example, from 10 units to 11, what does that do to the revenues that we would have anticipated under the rate study? And so you see over the five-year term, we would project to receive approximately $437,000 less than under the current rate option. So then we said, okay, well then what if we raise the rates to make up that difference? So if we increase the baseline allocation to that 11 units for a one-inch water service and we increase the rates to make it equivalent to where you're still whole, as with the original option one, and what that equates to, it's a slight increase in the base bill. But what's interesting is in year three, four, and five, the flow rate actually decreases compared to the five-year rate plan option one. And so I'll give you some, some numbers to, to think about. So under the current five-year rate plan option one, in year one for a one-inch water service, it's $27.64. So if we increase the base allocation to 11 units and increase the rates accordingly to, to, so you have no loss in revenues compared to the option one, it'd be $28.50. So it's approximately 90 cents difference. As you get into year five, under the five-year rate plan option one, it's $42.33. Under this option, it's $42.59. And so a 27 cent difference. And like I mentioned, the flow rate under the five-year rate plan option one is $2.19 in year five. Under this option, it'd be 2.137 cents. So there's some, a little bit of give and take on, you know, the, the base bill goes up slightly, but the flow rate goes down. And so we wanted to present that option to council, since there was quite a bit of discussion about increasing the base allocation a little bit. And the option would be if you do that, do you continue with the current five-year rate plan option one, understanding that there could be a little bit of reduction in the revenues, or do you increase the rates accordingly to make up that difference? So in the end, where does that get us for water? The rates, the revenues under the increased rates would cover the O&M expenses, which is blue, debt service, which is red, and then the priority one and two projects that we discussed previously. For wastewater, council directed staff to move forward with the five-year rate plan option one. And there's, this is a, a flat fee for single families, so there's no consideration for how much water is used. So the baseline allocation doesn't play into this equation. And so these rates are the same as what was presented at the March 1st council meeting. And so where that gets us for the wastewater rates is again, O&M is in blue, debt service is in red, and then capital projects for the priority one and two projects is in green. And so the rates would be sufficient to cover those costs. So what's required to proceed forward with rate increases? It requires a Proposition 218 process. When we did the previous rate study in 2011, council approved guidelines for the submission and tabulation of protests. So those have been in place for a few years now. We would mail notices of the public hearing for the proposed water and wastewater rate increases at least 45 days prior to the protest hearing. Those notices, if you are a sewer customer only, you would, you would get a sewer notice. If you're a water customer only, you'd get a water notice. If you're a water and sewer customer, you get both notices. We're proposing that the protest hearing be scheduled for June 7th of 2016. And then the rate increases approved if the written protests do not exceed 50% of the property owners or customers. And so the recommendation is to accept and adopt the rate study once council decides which, on the water side, which option they're proceeding with. And then set the protest hearing for June 7th, 2016, and approve the notices for the Proposition 218 protest hearing. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions of Diana?
Through the mayor. Quick question, just for the public's edification. When then, if this is approved, when would the new rates go into effect for the public?
So June 7th, we had to have the protest hearing. At that point in time, we could have the first reading of the ordinance. We would then follow up with the second reading at the following meeting in June, so that would be June 21st. And then the ordinance would go into effect 30 days later. So the ordinance would go to effect in July.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. On the water chart, we did the actual charting, it shows that some, with the current or the proposed, that it actually goes above revenues, actually do exceed very slightly the actual project one and twos, and then it crosses back down into it. If you go back to that real quick. Yes, right there, it kind of shows that it goes up a little above. Now, if that actually happens toward, because people are using a significantly more amount of water, which means we probably wouldn't reach our reduction of 20% at 2020, and it goes up higher, the council would have the ability to decide to not increase the rates at that time because it's exceeding what our goal is, unless the citizens came in and said, you know, don't bother, just keep it at the scale that's the automatic. I doubt they would do that, but there is that possibility. And there would be funding in their capital funding for other projects that we are not providing for right now. So I just wanted to make sure that that's going to be part of this process. Is that correct?
Right. So staff's recommending that on an annual basis, and it'd be about this time of year as we're doing budgets, that staff would present to council where we are with the water and wastewater revenues and, you know, provide the projection for the next year so that council could, and then make a recommendation as to the, whether or not the full rate increase should be implemented in the following year, or whether or not we could look at a reduced rate increase for implementation in the following year.
Any other comments, questions?
I just, through the mayor, just wanted to make a comment. There was the workshop on April 2nd.
The open house, yes.
Yeah, the open house. And that was great. We had probably a dozen folks, correct, that came through. And I think that was an eye-opener for a lot of folks to actually see the process and see the plants, the treatment plants. I wish more people would have come out to actually see the plants and how they work and the maintenance that needs to be done and continue to provide the best service there. Thank you for doing that. Thank you for planning that.
Any other comments? I will open this to the public for anyone that wishes to make a comment from the public You just state your name for the record.
Dale McDowell. I still have a little bit of problem on, I know there's been an adjustment for one, for one unit in, in all of the, in all the water conservation, everything, I never heard anything from Governor Brown that said anything about reducing the units. And this is a double whammy on, on the increase, on the water cost increase, highest ever in, in the history of Yuba City. On the last, on the, on the, on the last five year, it went, it was up 5%, on the first year. At the end of five years, it was up 24%. Now, not taking these figures that, for the, for the new ones, but with the original one that came out, the price you have is 95% the first year, and at the end of five years, 195% increase in the water. Now, this is an apple to an apple, one unit to one unit, not 10 to 15. This chart on here has, if anybody looked at it, and it says that, that the cost for 10 units is $21.59, $2.15. You don't figure 10, you figure 15 to $21.59, it's $1.43. So I really have a problem with it, you know, this is, I think if these figures are wrong at the beginning here, so that makes all of them wrong all the way across. And so I think you probably should do a little bit of research. If these, if there, that's a minor problem there. So, I mean, the other problems are in all this chart and all these figures. It's a, that's a job, I realize that. But I don't know, you know, if you realize how big of an impact it's going to have on this, on the citizens of Yuba City. And I think there should be more consideration taken for it. Thank you.
My name's Tim Corr, I live over 3120. Nothing in the particulars, except that the protest hearing being scheduled for June 7th, that's the presidential primary date, polls will still be open at the time of the protest hearing, and with voter turnout expected to be very high since California is in play for both major parties, I was hoping that the council would consider holding a special date the next week, the following week, to give the public more of an option to show up and voice their concern.
Thanks, Tim. Obviously, we're going to have to look at that, but, you know, oftentimes, we double-book ourselves when, when we do things, so. Any other comments from the, from the public? The only thing I, that, that I want to really say about our system is, we have a highly reliable and very good delivery system for our water. It does need continual care. Our sewer system, certainly by maintaining it, keeps us out of a position for the state to find us. It's not, not that we're going to be fined free, because they seem to find any way into the taxpayer's pocket that they possibly can. But we do, we do need to maintain these aging systems as, as we move forward. And they, they do cost more money as, as you're trying to do more of the projects that are coming due, and they're doing payable as, as we move forward. I think as a, as a city, and certainly myself as a, as a member of this council, I don't want it to have the system get into a failure mode and then cost the, the taxpayers a tremendous amount of money to be able to bring that back online, and certainly don't want to have the same issues that apply to other cities throughout the nation when they try to deliver or get rid of waste treatment from their systems. Yuba City has been blessed with low fees in the, in the past when it comes to our enterprise system. But at this point, and certainly due to a lot of things outside the control of past councils and this council, the drought has, has affected what it takes to build or run that system effectively from a, just from, from the operational side, and then certainly being able to keep the city in, in a good position with its bond ratings. And, and if we dip below 1.2%, then that is not looked at as a favorable position for the city when we go out and, and try to get future bonds. So it will affect what, what our borrowing rate is in the future. So being able to maintain that, being able to maintain that system, I look at, at a number of things, and I'm just going to use an, an orange to an apple at this moment, and that is, look at as we as individuals, and, and I'm talking about myself, as we get older, how much more it takes to maintain ourselves even through the healthcare system. Everything costs more and there's more diagnostic work that needs to be done just to make sure that you're healthy and, and moving forward. There is nothing different to this system than, than what the human organism is in just trying to keep the system viable and alive and, and moving forward. And, and again, not losing the system over a period of time due to neglect. And I think that we're blessed with citizens that see that as, as a huge part. As painful as it can be, from a monetary point, I, I'm blessed every day I can first turn on a faucet and get good, clean drinking water out of it, and secondly, flush my toilet and never see the product that was in it ever again. And, and I think that that's something that is of high value to most people. Our commercial accounts that can process food and get rid of their wastewater in high volume back into the system is what keeps our robust agricultural products in the marketplace. So I think that all of those things are key to why we need to keep the system up and, and viable.
Through the mayor. Thank you very much. I'm actually the one that kind of pressed the staff a little bit hard on getting some out-of-the-box questions dealing with the baseline being at 11. What kind of an effect would that have on the financial? How far would that drop us on our bond and, and the effects that that would have? And, you know, typically on a bond like that, there's a short-term drop, they kind of go, we're watching you, you don't get slapped for it. But if it's going to look like you're not doing anything to correct it, already have a plan in place, when you see it, they'll come in and they'll really work you over on our bond ratings and stuff. And we do not want to affect that right now because it is, we have one of the highest that I've seen for a city right now after coming out of recession. We're doing fantastic on that, and it's because of the care that's been done. And then I also, on that, we're already, is it not true, we're already going to be, even with the change in option one, we're going to dip slightly down for a period of time below that, which kind of is going to alert the bond people already? So while we're moving quickly, we're not moving at an unreasonable rate and taking advantage of the citizens by just doing it, you know, real quick or moving in an urgency way to, just for the sake of that bond, the debt ratio to be there. We're accepting a little bit of risk to keep from raising it, you know, quickly and too high. So I did press very hard for those questions to be answered. And then also on the 2020 legislation where we're supposed to be reducing 20%, we, we achieved that even early, but look what we had to do. Lawns, I mean, look how many trees I see around that they're now tearing out because people let trees die, lawns die. I mean, it was massive amount of loss for, personally for citizens and stuff. And so we're going to have to look at this very carefully in the next couple of years to, to actually achieve what we're trying to achieve on the, which is legislated, we have to do it. Otherwise penalties and not qualifying for grants and other things that are coming through that we'd, we would normally qualify for. So I think we're moving in a manner that is very cautious and frugal. I had other people had called me, some business people around the community and asked lots of questions, and I, I brought them to the staff to get them answered for them, and they said while they don't like it, they do understand this, this need and that make sure that we represent them well and not take advantage of them. And because of that, they're not here tonight, and they said, just fight for us. And so I said, okay.
Through the mayor. Just like to point out that one of the reasons why this is so critical that we deal with this, as, as council member Cleveland alluded to, is, is our bond ratings. We have worked hard as this council and past councils to ensure that our bond ratings are kept as high as possible. And keeping this 1.2 threshold above our, our debt on this is so critical because we're talking about price increases here now, but if, if we were to neglect and to let this just go and, and let it drop, we would be ended up paying a lot more in the future in bond rates for future loans, if we could even get them. And so it is very prudent that we do this, not only this council, but past councils have taken this seriously. And this is something that is an important part of the decision that we have to make here tonight. Thank you.
I did forget one item, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Robin, how much have we saved because of our bond rating lately and refinancing different things and not just us, but, I mean, just the many things? How many hundreds of thousands of dollars?
Considerable. The last bond rating was $5.
I know there was something we did with the Cal歇Park, we were able to do because of bond rating, we saved a significant money there. To wherever we've been able to go, we've been able to reissue things and, and reduce taxpayer cost. So, so we have been able to do that because of working hard in that direction. So it does end up benefiting in the long run, actually overall, so just wanted to point that up.
Thank you for making that point. Diana, given Mr. Corr's input on the June 7th date, would there be any problem with slipping this to the 21st?
Yes, we do, only because we won't have a meeting, the first meeting of July. And so then that puts us the second meeting of July for the second reading, which would then mean it wouldn't go into effect until August. And so for every month that we continue to extend this, it just impacts our rev, continues to impact our revenues.
And statutorily, we can't move it forward?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, Diana, would that be possible to move it to the, the 6th or the 8th on either side?
We could.
Okay. You know, besides that, Mr. Mayor, I think it's a point well raised. There's also though, the option for people to protest, they don't necessarily have to come to the meeting.
Right.
It provides them that option, but the Prop 218 process allows for people to submit protests that have to be considered as part of your overall process.
And, and, yeah. No, I fully understand that. It's the public process though, that, and, and open forum process that certainly is most appealing when, when it, when it comes to hearing the input as we move forward.
What could be a special meeting?
Okay, of course. All right.
I see Robin coming up.
I was just going to offer, we also have a budget workshop scheduled, I don't know if we can take care of any business at that workshop as well, which throws out another possible date. How would that impact you? When's the? We're looking right now at May 23rd.
Yeah, I think we'd have a hard time meeting that date.
We do, June 8th.
Yeah, May 23rd, I think would be too soon.
Okay. So, I mean, my, my personal feeling is, is that we should look to a special date outside the 7th, whether it be the 6th or the 8th, to take care of that issue. And with that, pleasure to the council.
Through the mayor. I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt staff's recommendation for A, B, and C, and give consideration to either set the meeting for either June 6th or either June 8th for a special meeting.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
So that was two dates you have, either the 6th or the 8th.
For a special meeting.
And I think we need a specific date.
Yeah, so, and first I need clarification, if we're moving forward with the five-year rate plan option one with the 33% reduction in the baseline allocation, or if we're going, if it's council's direction to go with a different option?
I will submit that I would prefer having the 11 units than the 10, but that'd be up to the motion and the second to change there.
Yeah, and I, and, and that's what I was looking at with the 11 units, given more units, but it's spreading very little cost over that. So my motion would be for the 11 units and the date to So my motion would be for the 11 units and the date to set the date on June 8th for a special meeting, which is a Wednesday versus a Monday.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just to, to further clarify, that is the 11 units with the adjusted base rate as well.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
That, that was the motion. And the original second?
I will second that.
I couldn't tell who it was.
It was a tie last night, so I don't know.
So we have a three-way here. All right.
And Mr. Mayor, just, just for clarification, if we're using 11 units, that's going to change the, the form of the notice for the, the notices that are going out?
That's correct.
Okay, so we have a motion.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, and further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed, none. Thank you.